Hello.
Can you man?
Okay.
Okay.
Didn't sound very convincing.
Okay, next one, Brad.
No, I don't understand. Actually, when I called Doug, I was just going to bed. I was getting up.
Luke said he's about 10 minutes away. We'll call order a little late.
You got a seat right over there?
No.
Oh, or what?
All heard first and we're ready for council.
We still don't have any, uh, buddy question there?
No, we have none. I just have a couple of things that, like, bookkeeping things that were things I didn't know about, so, and those are on the report.
Don't say anything inappropriate, Mike Trump. If you would, everybody find this, your oath, and you can handwrite your name in there where it says I, and then I'll do a group with the states and the oath. No?
I think it's a, I think it's a S U C.
It appears to be S U C.
Dan, what's that column here? I think it's a letter.
You didn't say anything about it?
Oh, yeah. We'll have four different, so.
So I didn't follow my expectations. You gotta head it up just a moment.
I've already, yeah.
I've already read it.
Yeah. You, you got us all here, Jack, so, I guess.
Answer the count, the school vote, votes at the arm, Michael.
I don't, I think they're open till seven.
But are they?
Yeah, I think, I think it's like six twenty.
I went over lunch.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it's seven o'clock now, so, I guess.
But the vote counts are two separate, uh, things tonight, right?
Yeah.
I believe so, yeah, there was, yeah, yeah. I stopped in at, what was after the L A P C meeting, and, uh, they said they had 260?
They have 258, no, I was there.
Maybe that's, oh.
For the school board?
Yeah.
Okay. They said they had a good count of the city when I stopped, and then I didn't get a, a number, but they said they got a nice showing, so.
Who counts the votes at the school board, those three poll workers?
I believe so. I, I don't know if Mr. Norton is there too, I'm not, I guess I don't know about that.
Never sign to watch till the end?
No.
Much many people ask.
If you, uh, come up here and sit and watch till the end, you're gonna be here pretty late.
Oh, for the voting? Yeah, the counting, yeah.
I think the last, last time I was here and, and stayed with Doug while he entered the, all of the vote totals to the Secretary of State's portal, and I think we were getting close to one o'clock in the morning, weren't we, Doug?
It's pretty late.
Oh, it's.
That's why.
That's why, that's really annoying.
Can you bring up some jeopardy music until it gets there? Oh, that's cruel, unusual public.
I'm hooked up. Calm gentle rain, put y'all to sleep.
There you go.
Probably the new thing that.
To aid, to aid in that break.
This is already.
Pardon?
Sorry, I didn't plan. Right, you're in the well, I have a well, get that clock out. There's not me, and I did this thing, and you're not really me.
I haven't, I thought we were plugged in.
Ray.
I don't think so. They have batteries?
I think so.
Guessing not.
Well, maybe not. I don't know, I haven't gotten this with mine, and so it'd be a treasure.
Is that where the original one was?
Um, yeah, wherever it was, yes.
Just be, not a trouble, anything you say?
I didn't hear from Ann.
Yes, probably not, he's usually here on time.
True story. I like it.
Did he say we're under here?
Yeah, I would guess so.
Yeah, I would.
Yes.
Mike, do you just have one more meeting at this, did you have?
I have the fifteenth, and then on the sixth, I've got to be part of the old council, when we, we can, we come to a meeting, and then, uh, after that, I get through a turn and a half, and then the new council member steps up, whether it be Gail or Tisha. Or whatever it may be.
When do they know their results?
They'll, they'll know tonight, but I don't, do they notify it tonight, or?
Yeah.
I don't remember. I'm gonna go later after here and see if they're done or what's going on.
The last time they had a city election, they counted, counted the votes live online, did they?
I guess that's what it was, yeah, I watched. Yeah, because I was there to help certify it, but they did all the counting, and they had to count it like six times, for some reason.
Yeah, because there was a really, a really close vote, I think, wasn't it?
Well, it was like sixty forty or something like that, but they kept getting different numbers each time they counted, so.
I wonder if anybody these days casts a power ballot, like in the, the school election, where you have to vote for two of the three. If you want to really cast a powerful vote, you want to vote one. And you're not voting for your second desk.
I know a few that are voting for one.
Yeah.
At the, at the school board.
Yeah. I think it used to be done by common name, but it's not.
I do that with the judges. I vote no.
No?
Just so they understand, I don't care about what they vote. I vote no for the judges, so they know there's people that aren't happy with all their decisions.
Oh, boy.
Because it's a retention vote, so.
You have to get one vote to retain. Oh, that's remarkable.
I'm sorry, actually, it's not that you are.
Crazy? Crazy Davey?
Vance.
Yeah.
Ray.
Yeah, they went to, um, Kentucky.
What's in Kentucky?
Uh, my dad's brother, Davey.
Have they been there a week or two?
Uh, I think they left, when did they leave? Last Thursday?
Can't be said they were going somewhere, I can't remember where it's last word was, Kentucky.
Yeah, they wanted to see the solar eclipse, yeah.
Was it completely, really, a hundred percent?
Yeah.
I didn't see anything. Of course, I was in the basement with a guy facing the washing machine. But I, I could look out the basement window, I didn't see it, it got even darker.
Well, it's a problem yesterday.
Wouldn't you think it would get darker, wouldn't you?
Well, we were, we were what, sixty six or seventy?
Six or seven percent or something.
Yeah.
What part of Kentucky were they in?
Uh, town called Sturgis.
Sturgis?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, is that near Louisville?
I have no idea. I, I looked at it on a map one time, and I, I couldn't tell you where it's at.
Where's Sturgis?
Sure.
Oh, my God. Let's, let's, uh, probably.
I think it's pretty similar size to Miller, actually. It's a smaller town.
Established in eighteen ninety, so it's fucking years young.
Or maybe it was bigger than Miller.
Luke didn't get stopped by Han County's finance, trying to hurry here.
Don't you guys have a free, free pass badge? You just?
I guess it's up to you, you just got your options.
What's?
Yeah.
What was? Maybe you should try.
That stained glass has got to be original.
Well, they're fine.
It's building or not?
It's a new one, for sure.
Oh, no, it's not, it's, it's just a, okay. How about the Presbyterian Church gym, that's all?
That's original stuff from nineteen twenty-five, except for even far back in, on the second shelf. Those are, you can tell, are completely different designs, and the rest of it, yes.
Jim, that man broke them out.
I gotta watch it before I do. I think that church in this building, we're, we're gonna hear of each other. Isn't this nineteen twenty-five?
I don't remember.
It is. I think that's nineteen twenty-five or six. Must have spent some money in the country then.
Makes me wonder what, you know, this structure now, you know, I mean.
Absolutely. We couldn't, again, you could maybe build a ten building, but office two, about it.
You couldn't touch, you couldn't touch five percent of the marble in here for what it originally cost to build this whole building?
Oh, I would.
I bet this would be fifty million, a hundred million to build.
Yeah, who knows? Prices, yeah, for like items.
Oh, yeah, forget it, for anything.
So, we've been having some discussions about replacing radiators, uh, five thousand dollars on up for a new, new radiator that looks like it's period correct.
Oh.
They, uh.
No, they elevate it to six hundred thousand.
Doug brought up the other day that maybe we ought to, uh, take some, like, out of these back vault rooms and stuff that aren't being used, you know, move them out here to the areas we need to, to some of these ones that failed, you know?
Yeah.
Take a hard look at that, because it'd certainly be.
I mean, just cap, cap it off in there.
How many have we got capped off, Doug?
I have, well, I don't.
I think there's six.
There's one in my office that didn't, the other one in my main apartment, needs to be added on too.
I still wonder if we can't rebuild them, but I don't know yet. Is there still a manufacturing?
I don't know him personally, but I know a guy that's. I don't know what's caused it, but it's, it can't be, can't be.
Mr. Norton makes money, someone else manufacturing him today, selling him?
Some blanket.
Wonder who they sell him to?
People that want to keep, like, this, you know, at their store.
Oh, you'd be surprised at how many old houses are restored with that period of stuff in them.
Oh, yeah.
There's our man.
Especially, you know, older coast, East, West, you know.
Well, even in my office, there's a lot of them.
Before you park, we'll call this meeting to order, and everybody please rise, and Joe, some pledge of allegiance, right, this back in the corner. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, invisible, with liberty and justice for all. The, uh, first item on the agenda is review and approval of the agenda. Uh, I would accept the motion that we change, uh, Patrick Price from the city of Miller to Mike Wetz. So, motion in a second, or a favor, aye?
Yes, great.
I oppose, no. Motion carries. And recognize the, uh, members of the Consolidated Board of Equalization, uh, the county commissioners who are seated here, Mike Wetz from the city of Miller, Vance Caffey from the Miller School District, Shirley Peck from the city of St. Lawrence.
All right, I will administer the oath to each of you. Now, the way I'm gonna do this is that we each raise your right hand, and you will only say aye at the end, so I'll do the rest, okay? So, if each of you is a member of the Consolidated Board of Equalization for Han County in the state of South Dakota for the year of twenty twenty-four, solemnly swear and depose that you say that you will fair, fairly and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Consolidated Board of Equalization for the county and state, that you will seek to place upon the books of the tax jurisdiction any property that may have been omitted by error or neglected the assessor, and that you will faithfully and impartially perform all of your acts enjoined upon you by law, to the end that all assessments within the above coming may be completed and just and equal as between the property holders. You still swear?
I do.
And if you haven't signed, please do. Pass them down, and I will attest them. As far as staff reports go, anyone wishing to contest their company valuation is required to file in my office a statement saying so, and as of the first day of April, no such complaints were received, so therefore you will not have any hearing on any complaints. Under that, my portion is complete, and Jamie takes over.
All right, I'm just gonna go over my portion on that. As Doug said, that, that we have no complaints received in the auditor's office. Um, I have a few bookkeeping items that I've covered. I handed out a report just so you guys can kind of see the numbers of the entire county, um, and the percentages of change, also the growth for the county, because city of Miller and Ray Heights had some growth this year. Um, we have no appeals, uh, received all township meeting minutes back from their equalization board minutes, uh, except for Park Township, they, they have, did not pick up their book again this year.
Where's my mint?
Park.
Oh.
And, and I can't tell you how many, it's been since I've been here for sure, that they haven't got their book, and I think a couple of years before that, um, let's see.
What, is there anything to be done in?
Um, that, I, I can do that with the partner or red nail. I submit all of the stuff to them, and then you're back from them. I will, and I tell them which ones do and do not pick up their books, um, and I will ask them if, you know, if there's so many years or whatever, if they don't meet, then do we do something about that? Okay? Um, the only thing on interior township, they had a mobile home that, uh, was burned down by the owner, um, and so that value was removed after I received their minutes back. Town of Re, Re Heights and Westington, no changes there or appeals. The city of Miller, I corrected an unoccupied status on a home that we missed a gentleman that, uh, passed away last year, and then, um, in auditing the property cards, we missed a garage that was not getting unoccupied status, so we put that back on, and, uh, they did have a homeowner come in and report extensive water damage on the home, so I reviewed it, and then we, I lowered the value for that, because they will be tearing that one down in the next year. Okay, and then we have forty-four requests for property taxes and status, those are listed in the papers. Um, I do have the list here, and they are also on the public's notice wall, if you want to look at who those are. We also have six tax fees requests, those are confidential, as well as the veteran exemption, which we have three in the entire county. So, with all of that, does anyone have any questions on, um, any other things reported?
I have one.
Okay.
Yeah, like, when you got Han County rated here almost two billion dollars, city of Miller, what is that? That hundred million ninety-eight, that isn't included in two billion, is it?
Okay, so Han County does the entire.
In municipalities. Okay, what percent of the one point nine six six is rural, uh, farm, ground, or pasture?
What percent?
Yeah.
Like?
Of the total value of Han County, how much of it is rural agricultural property?
More than you think.
Like ninety percent of it?
I would say between eighty.
Probably at least that.
Eighty.
If you add these up.
Yeah, if you add those up.
Ninety to a hundred, hundred and eight, hundred and nine, about a hundred and ten million for Han, I mean, Miller, St. Lawrence, Re Heights, and Westington. So a hundred and ten million in total valuation is one point nine six billion.
Yeah, so that's only ten percent.
So ten percent.
Yes, maybe you're a crazy, is it half its market value?
Okay, so all agricultural land is on the productivity, um, formula that is supplied by the state, but as far as structures, as of now, yes, unless it's a non-A C property, those are not fifty percented, but structures that are on agricultural land are fifty percented.
Okay. If we didn't have that reduction, what would the total value of Han County's property be? Off of, off of, uh, its real value?
If we didn't have that, and so I was messing with some numbers in the last four weeks of all the conversations that we've been having about the money situation here in Han County. Um, I toyed with the idea of removing the fifty per, fifty percent, and I will tell you, and I'll just tell everybody this now, since I'm starting the Han County reappraisal this year, obviously I'm doing the municipalities first. When I move into those townships, I'm gonna start around the city of Miller, and then I'm gonna gradually move out. My plan is, in talking with other assessors, is to not just, not just automatically give up fifty percent because you're agricultural, you know, they're getting an exemption on their structures, any, you know, a ten thousand dollar exemption. So I'm gonna basically plot, draw my G I S map, like, a mile from Miller. If you live within a mile of Miller and you're ag, probably it'll just be a certain percentage, because you're within a mile of the municipality. Then go out two miles, then three miles, and then five, you know, you get the idea.
Is it because it's less marketable as you, uh, depart, I mean, uh, you just?
Not to basically, it doesn't seem to be, you know, like, there's a lot of people that are wanting to build, and they've been buying farm studs for pretty high prices, in my opinion, not just, I'm gonna use Luke, can I use Luke?
You can.
Okay, so Luke's not going anywhere, he has his house and all of that out there, or whatever, but I'm talking, like, people that are retiring from farming, they're renting out all of their land, and they've decided to plow out the house and any structures around that, and they're selling that to someone that is not farming, those are prime real estate.
That's not a fifty percent cut?
No, that's, those are, uh, right now, those are even at eighty-five percent.
Okay, is that your office policy, is that Han County's policy, or is it statutory?
That is just our policy. That's what we decided to do according to the market, but I will tell you that that is, needs to be readjusted a little bit, so. Since I've been here, like, the week here, I raised the, the non-A C properties, which would be those, the land value fifteen, fifteen percent, because they're not on soils, they're on an acre value. Am I doing, okay, any, any, any? Um, I believe all the other information is here on the agenda for you, that was, as far as, um, that fifteen percent, and also what the egg factor is and the non-egg factor, what the crop and non-crop top sellers are, which are determined by the state productivity statute.
And those are real dollars, right?
Correct. That's just off each type of soil that is on the land. On the eight-year Olympic averages. Any other questions?
I'm moving past, closing books. No, I'll send you questions.
Motion by Jay to approve and close the books, seconded by Jim Johns, is the main discussion on the motion. The questions asked, asked to that motion are hearing none, or a favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Okay, so Shirley and Vance and Mike, make sure that you turn these materials into your finance officers or your business manager, because they need to know those growth numbers, so when you're doing your budgeting. Please pass it on.
Will do.
So, that is that.
Please, I'm coming.
Just committing your business, that will follow once you get. If you're afraid of it, you can say it, you are. Yeah, you can hang out. Thank you for, for liking me. Thanks.
Just, um, in the, in the, definitely.
Yeah, I have to do.
I can answer your question. So you have C A A one, is twenty-five million four hundred ninety-one, valued at twenty-sixteen dollars? If I would, if you add fifty percent to that.
Oh, it wouldn't be that much, but in terms of the total value of all projects, I don't think much difference.
Correct, and I'm not against the egg structures themselves, I'm thinking about residential.
Right, right. So it would add about fifty million to the total?
Basically, yeah.
Okay.
Basically. Okay, thank you. Shirley, do you want to take that and book at it, because you sure, your book?
Okay.
If you, and, and write it back, if you want, that, that's fine.
Okay.
You can just look at it and see if you're seeing, you know, like, I don't know, and the wallet's over and, you know, go back and think more.
Jamie?
Yeah.
What does Han County do with regard to those values?
What I talked about, doing the mile, the mile thing, like.
That's the formula, isn't it?
Yeah.
Does Han County do it that way?
No.
Is that just to stay fifty percent up in the rural areas, or is it like others?
I don't think that they fifty percent anything, buildings and.
It's eighty-five, like, like.
I believe so. I'd be surprised if they did. So, I can ask, I'll ask him.
What do you do with that fire with all those cats? Is that rural?
No.
Is that ag or military?
Uh-uh.
So that's where.
That's, that's, that's waterfront property.
So it's eighty-five?
Probably more than like, more, more.
One more?
More. Like, they have, they have to deal with, like, deliver front view and all that kind of stuff, like, in Sully County, um, my girlfriend, that's the director there, you know, they went through a huge reappraisal, and they had an outside company do it, and, like, some of those lot values, you know, they valued just a lot, it's also with the deal at, like, seventy-five thousand dollars, and it was probably seventy-five percent more than what it was assessed at before.
Wow.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Jamie.
Yeah, thank you, guys. He hasn't always, yeah, okay. Forever, right?
What's she saying?
There you go. Yeah. Commission business, uh, budget discussion. The TV doesn't work because the board broke, and I have some problems, but, um, as far as the financials go, that I knew, there might be some confusion as to how to read those. So I wanted to cover that so that you can get a glimpse of how that works, but unfortunately, my iPad won't pull up. Can you play Mopman yours? Okay, so can I borrow yours? Tell you how it works. Those are ones you want, right? Move up closer. Happy family. Yes, okay, so the easy way to do this, to see where we're at, based on these reports, is you would look at the cash fund balance report.
Be careful.
So when you look at the cash fund balance report, it tells you how much money is in each of the different funds. So general fund, road bridge fund, nine oh one fund, twenty-four seven fund, right, and the others. But our main concentration will be the general fund and the road bridge fund, because those are the two largest. So the next thing you look at is you look at the balance sheet, because the balance sheet tells you within that fund, so this is, I'll just have to pass that around. The balance sheet tells you within the fund whether some of that has been reserved, if it's unresignated, or, like in the case of the general fund, the property taxes are still owed, so it shows us a negative on that. So if you scroll to the road bridge fund, you'll see essentially, yep, just the next page. Essentially, the same thing takes place, place, except that there's a lot fewer reservations because the road bridge fund itself is a fund that reserves its own cash. It doesn't disappear and revert to a different fund at the end of the year, it stays within the fund. So then the next item you would look at. Scroll down, please. Nope, it's in a different report. So if you want, you can pass that around so you get familiar with it.
So it is confusing to look at later, because to me, this balance sheet shows the road and bridge fund has four hundred and ten thousand dollars of cash.
Yep.
Is that true? On hand?
Yep. So like the general fund, when you look up there, do you have it open?
Yeah.
So you'll see that there, like, there used to be like ARPA that was dedicated for that, so it had to be specifically labeled, or what I say is it's painted a different color than the other cash. So then, the next report you're gonna look at is the comparison of expenses and revenues. And that tells you how much money we brought in versus how much we spent. So, I wish I could do this for you.
For this year?
Yes. So in this case, we've, in both of those funds, we have spent more than what we have brought in. And that's what the funds that are left in the cash fund balance are paying for. So it's not like a savings account. But what it's saying is, is that if, when we spend more than we bring in, it has to pull that from somewhere, and that's that cash fund balance. So every time somebody turns in a voucher in here, it is obligating a portion of that cash fund balance.
So, that's the confusing part to me, I was looking at it, there's, if the balance sheet says we has four hundred dollars, forty thousand dollars of cash, but our expenditures outweigh our revenue this year by four hundred and eighteen thousand in the road bridge fund. I don't make sense of that really, I mean, I understand the expenses, but how do we have that much cash?
Because the cash fund balance, you don't get to look at it every day. When we do our checkbooks and we balance it, we get to see right after we write a check where our balance is gonna be. Or right after we make a deposit, what it's gonna be. To have that, I would run these reports daily, but it would do nothing, because we don't always pull the revenues over from treasury on that basis. So the other thing to look at is, we have money that comes in for property taxes that are saved for school districts, and they are saved for townships, and they are saved for cities. That's what makes our bank balances look as large as they are. So to get a real glimpse of what the bank balances are, you would have to take those bank balances and then look at all of that fiduciary money that we're sitting on, and remove that from the equation. That's not our money.
And that's not appearing here, you mean?
It appears in the cash fund balance report, because each of those different entities represents its own segment of that report.
So where it says eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, it isn't ours?
That is ours.
That is ours?
Yeah, but if you look here, this is our liabilities.
Because we got three or four in taxes?
Yep. So if we come down here, well, there's forty pages in this.
Yes.
So we'll scroll down to school districts. Forgive me, this is how they're gonna see the classes on.
Yeah, I saw it in there, it shows that for sure.
There we go. So of the balance in our checking account, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars of that belongs to the five school districts. Another sixty-five thousand seventy-five dollars belongs to the townships, and another twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-one belongs to the cities. So that's why.
So about sixty.
What about?
Seventy percent of the money, we don't, that's in our fund, isn't ours.
In our cash.
Fund.
Balance.
Yeah.
Isn't ours. And that's why at the last meeting, I said, in essence, we've been surviving, because we're not cash poor, it's just not our cash. And when legislative audit reviews us, they're gonna beat us up over there.
Because they're gonna see that it's not our cash.
Right. And then they're gonna look and they're gonna say, well, why do you continue to spend more than you bring in? And I can't answer that. But look at you guys. At a certain point, you have to, because you still have to conduct a down payment.
Right.
So.
At what point does a well-done run dry?
Well, wouldn't we spend too much?
They wag.
When the checks start to bounce, I mean, there's provisions in statute for when that happens. And how you basically send your creditors IOUs. But, to my knowledge, I haven't seen where, that's been exercised since the early nineteen hundreds.
We're not in that shape.
No. No, but we do need to continue.
No, I didn't know you guys were still.
Sure, we're talking about budgets. Some of the questions that I've got, since we passed this road bridge levy on Tuesday, is how did this happen all of a sudden, and it's more hasn't actually happened all of a sudden? I said, we've been discussing pinching venues and saving money since late last summer, or.
For that, maybe.
And, and, yeah, yeah.
Basically, about two years we've been doing it.
Yeah, and the tipping point is, the blizzard hit us hard, because that was an unforeseen expense. And we had to shell out a lot of money in a lot of different areas, not just road and bridge, I mean, like, you take public safety, for example, I'm sure Shane's expense has increased because he's responding to these people that get stranded, stuck, whatever it might be. Um, it just costs more, and then fuel costs more, and we're paying more for like workman's comp than we used to. So I mean, there, there's, it's a big pot.
Have we not had those big injections the last few years, or what if?
Wait, it does come to a head much.
This would happen to me.
Probably three years soon. Right, and so, I was visiting with some other department heads about this today, you know, so if you just start a list, I mean, we've made investments in the library. Were any of them not necessary? No. Were they all worthy? Yes. Could we have skipped one? Maybe the parking lot. At some point, we had to fix the roof, we had to deal with the extradition while fixing the roof. So I mean, there's those things that we're, we spent money on that were valid projects, I mean, replacement of vehicles, replacement of photocopiers, computers, those are normal operational expenses that all contribute towards spending on the balance. So, it's not one thing, it's, it's a series of things that cause that decline.
There was a bill in the legislature this year to get rid of that three percent cap.
Yes.
One year over the last. Did that pass?
No.
Nope.
No, because the main concern that I hear is people said it would go back to being uncontrollable. And so I'm not sure the right lingo they use, but if you touch a piece of legislation with one intent, it could end up being completely something different at the end of the day, by the end of the session. So, sometimes legislators are reluctant to open that door for fear that what's inside might be an ugly monster.
A Pandora's box.
Yes, exactly. So going back to the statement of revenues and expenditures, um, if you were in private business, you would call this your profit and loss statement. And so, just this year, in the general fund, we're looking at a deficit of one hundred and ninety-seven ten. So that's an obligation against that cash fund balance. And like I said, because we don't balance the checkbook every single day and show it to you, you're not gonna see that until these reports.
This is just occurred, right? This is yesterday, this is, this is the year so far this year.
Yep. And so in the just, in the road bridge fund, it's four hundred and eighteen. But then you have other funds, sorry, one more question. Fat fingers. Miss my TV, folks.
Doug, if we get closer to May first, when people are in the taxpaying mood, so to speak, is that gonna alter all of this markedly, or are you figuring?
Yes, I, I believe that it will.
Huh?
I believe that it will, and I actually have a query to find out if we can pull taxes more than just once a month.
Yeah.
So like, if we could do it weekly, or if we could do it twice a month, we would have a lot better view of what's going on, because we don't have to wait until after you guys meet, post the bills, pull tax.
And why can't we do it that way?
It's how they wrote it in the book.
You mean, it is statutory?
No, it's in the Southport manual.
Oh, we can change that.
We're gonna find out.
Okay. Boy, that might help a lot.
So I also did the FAS, FASH, cash fund balance report, and I rolled in what it was on the first, so just as an illustration. In the general fund, it said on the first, it was seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand. As of the eighth, it was eight hundred and sixty-nine. So pulling over those taxes and offsetting some of the expense, we still ended up with a gain, but it's not enough. Okay? And then if you look at the road bridge, it started out at the beginning of the month with five oh six, and then it went down four sixteen, because we had some big bills that we paid.
How many times a year do we pay the schools and the townships?
We pay them in the middle of each month.
Okay, and municipalities?
Yeah.
But we don't pay ourselves. We pay all those other entities, but not ourselves.
We retain the.
I don't think that makes any sense.
All comes out.
It all comes out, it all comes out.
I know, but it makes it look like it's a dire situation to the public, and it isn't that bad.
Well, it's not good. Jeff encountered this, this year, because when we bought the road graders, his budget showed that we spent all the money to purchase road graders, the whole amount, which was eight, nine.
Eight sixteen.
Eight sixteen. So it shows eight hundred and sixty expense, but it doesn't show the money that we borrowed to pay against it. So it looks like he had a really expensive year, so internally, you gotta remember, well, we borrowed money to pay for Carter, and then that will go over to long-term debt.
Which is why our long-term debt looks bad right now.
Yes.
It's worth far, where we stick to the year.
Yep.
Just what?
Our long-term debt looks bad right now.
Yeah, but then you say something else after that, something about this year.
Just this year.
Oh.
For, I mean, the overall budget, what we budgeted.
So that's just the crappy part of what I call governmental accounting, because it just doesn't mesh with what you and I do in our homes or our businesses, even, because theoretically, we can balance our checkbooks on any day of the month. And we know what we have for loans hanging out there, and we know what we have for bills coming in, and if we sat down long enough, we could figure it out. So yesterday, Jeff stopped in at my place and, and he was expressing a concern to me about getting his basically functional years started, working on roads, and he's, he's, would you say, somewhat confused about how much money can I spend, can I order my road oil, can I?
Kind of good a window, because I talked to three contractors today, and I was a little uncomfortable to commit to anything. But it's gonna, not, you know, you gotta, you gotta get, it's a timing thing, you gotta be ready to go, but.
Right, if we were in private business, we could go down to the bank and say, hey, I, I need some operating capital, until we can get some collections in. And you have that option, you can borrow money. That's always been an option, I mean, there's a limit as to how much you can borrow.
Like you said, we have the cash, it's just not ours.
So like St. Mark's Sewer Properties is an example, there's no way you could have afforded that, there's no way you could have financed it on your own, so you go find some low-interest loans, or go place some grants, well, unfortunately, we're not a big target for grants. I mean, we could get some fairly low-interest loans, but honestly, compared to what like USDA offers, we, we didn't find loans like that now. So let me go any further into the reports, because I know they're confusing, because they don't mesh up with what the rest of us do in our world.
Well, what you presented is very helpful, at least to a person like me, who's no accountant, that's for sure.
Well, I, I think we need to have answers for Jeff's department, his, his department is definitely seasonal, and he needs to know, is the money gonna be there if I order road oil, or if, if I start crushing gravel, or is, is, are those normal operations gonna put us in a pinch? Let's see. How far does your email go back? Do you save quite a bit? Okay, so I'm gonna open up a different email here. There it is, nope, wrong agenda. So if you look at the expenditure budget from the meeting at the beginning of the month. So, one of the biggest injects to the road bridge fund is when we get the step one. And you know off the top of your head roughly what that's gonna be?
The step minute?
Yeah.
It's about two sixty-five.
And then, another big revenue source is the continuation, or continual buying of license plates, motor vehicle fuels, and those are things that we see every month, but there are other months, where there's months among the year where we get more than we do at other times. So if you rewind the clock, or not rewind, but if you wind back to December, when we talked about how much money to move over to his budget to give operating capital, well, we sent money over there, but it compromised the general fund side, which is too much. You know, the crystal ball is still too cloudy. So even at that point, he didn't really have enough to really conduct business like he normally would. All right. Your wife has to know. All right. So let's go to road bridge. So if we look at line three thirty-five oh two, which is road bridge motor fuels, in two thousand and two, we got one million seventy-six thousand dollars from them. We're expecting, or we're hoping to realize one million fifty thousand. And so the budget for this year is one million one hundred thousand. As of right now, we've collected none of that.
How often do we get it?
Once a year.
And what's coming a year?
Usually May, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. Let me back up for a second. Not to put you on the spot, but how many years have you been involved in the revenue side of budgeting?
None.
Well, you and I.
Yeah.
I mean, we've talked about it since I started.
You've got to be starting in the revenue side of it.
And the reason for that is that everybody, not just him or me, and you guys, needs to realize that there's a finite amount of money that's available to us. And we're all in competition for that money. And that means that what impacts him, impacts me, impacts those two.
But that blind item doesn't impact any of us except for him, does it?
That blind item doesn't, but his budget overall does, because of the money that comes out of general fund to make up the difference when we split between the funds.
When we surplus like roads and bridges is one that affects the rest of the county.
Does that make sense? So when I have my, send out my budgets, there are times that I put right into email that it is a competition, you know, and people need to show some restraint. But ultimately, I don't have authority to exercise that restraint. You guys, you have the power of the purse. All I can do is give advice.
So it sounds like we should be getting a million dollars soon. Which is a brain injection into the road bridge.
For him, for him. Yeah, it's it's going to be a huge.
Well, then he's safe to go ahead and make these arrangements, isn't he, for this year?
As long as that money comes through.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't?
You know what, Jim? After the last two years, I'm very conservative in my predictions.
I mean, there isn't anything in the law that says they have to make those distributions to the counties by such and such.
It's federal money. So do you remember when we went through that, shouldn't I, I forgot what to call it, sequestration? And they stopped all allocations?
Yeah, they cost us a lot.
Yeah.
Well, they could shut them down.
Yeah.
And disposed to about ten times the last year.
So that's, that's why I, I've become very, very conservative in my estimations. Just because I.
Have we looked at, like, an operating loan, ever? I mean, it's not that I've seen. Has it ever been investigated? What kind of, I suppose I haven't even known that without making some calls, what kind of interest rates?
Sorry.
What kind of interest rates we could realize from that or not, but.
What loaning did it do?
I don't know, someone, I don't know, someone's got a loan to government, it seems, I think. I've never researched it at all, so I have no idea.
Right, but there's got, there's got to be there.
Was that somewhere?
I can't imagine there could be a safer loan for a bank to make, or a lender to make. The taxpayers are on the hook for it. They can be taxed to the point that it's paid. So it isn't like they're risking anything.
I know, equipment financing, equipment usually gets, governments get a pretty good rate.
Um, what have you got, like, starting up for this construction and road maintenance season? What have you got for big expenses coming up? I mean, you said something about road oil. Like brown lead, when would they start crushing?
Uh, he told me it was going to be here this spring, or to start, he was going to start down at Third Johnson's. But he hasn't shown up yet. He had a couple other places he would like to visit while he's here, and he said he would work with us on getting paid for it, but while he was in the country, he would like to. We got a pretty good bid from Roy Ginn this year too.
From him, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Hundred? Single owner, we're here relatively.
How long after that crushing has occurred do they expect to be paid?
Well, you know, when we got down to the end of the year sometime, he's waited a couple of months, but he would wait longer, I'm sure of it. He's always going to work with us if we need to. But, you know, road, uh, is usually in May and June, middle of May to the end of June is the best time for us to oil. We're not always ready. Because most county governments, they start the week after July, and the trucking is hard to get. So if you can get started in the last week of May, last year they gave us a small discount, and we got it all undone before July, because they knew their trucks were going to be a problem for them. So I mean, this is just, I, all kind, people called me today and was wondering when our start date was. And I didn't want to tell them, you know, we might have to hold off a bit, but I, I just, it's hard to talk to them, you just don't know, but. But you know, you got to be careful, and I realize that in this atmosphere, we got to be careful.
So Jeff, one of Jeff's questions of me yesterday was, so I have a budget, I have a twenty twenty-four budget approved. Can I just go ahead with operations as usual?
The number one rule is that cash is not budget, and budget is not cash. A budget is simply an estimation of what you're going to be able to do. They're not the same. You can have a budget without cash, you can have cash without a budget. And those are words exactly from Rod Fortune, he says it all the time.
That makes it pretty difficult for department heads to manage departments.
Absolutely. All of them. So there's some of us have been talking about the sacrifices that we make as well. You know, quite honestly, I hope they're not listening, but we, we're running a software platform that moves at the speed of dirt. We, we are losing valuable time working with a software package that was made in the nineteen eighties, renovated in the nineteen nineties, and then installed.
What brand name is on it?
Ultra Incorporated. They kept, they've been promising us an update for three, maybe four years.
So what we have, I would say you're four months five, because you guys have a meeting on my tax for a couple other counties. I've been really late last year.
We went to Watertown.
Yes.
I've been here five years.
Yeah, and I, I think that that time the original owner, didn't they sell?
They did sell.
They did, yes.
Are we paying on an annual basis for updates, and we're not getting them?
Well, we get, what am I called, seasonal updates? So like when it's tax billing time, they give us updated information there. The difference is, honestly, it's like going from a moped to a Corvus. But it would cost us tens of thousands of dollars to switch, plus you have the migration issue, and.
I don't understand what's that mean? What's migrating?
Migration of the data from this platform to that platform.
Oh.
You know, and so we've all wanted this upgrade for years. And now we're at the point where we know that it's hurting us as, as a whole to be stuck in this rut. Not only just.
How many other counties are stuck in the same rut?
Thirty, on my side. I don't know, there's sure needs of mostly moved away from it, right?
No, they are entitled to knowledge.
Well, there's several.
Yes.
And you're not, we're, we're entitled, but there's other ones.
But they've moved away from Ultra.
Yeah, the other ones have MS, and there's other, there's like four different ones, but yeah, ours is.
In my world, as far as directors, I believe that we're down under the twenty that are using Ultra. The reason why I'm staying on it is because of the integration between the auditor's office and the treasurer's office. All of our information, it's just easier, I believe, for my information to get sent over to Doug and vice versa. But I will tell you, like, this is like basically a dinosaur. I'm doing, using a computer like I learned, used a computer when I was fourteen with this program. When I was first learning how to use a computer, that's what it is. It's not time efficient, that's why I was taking a lot of time for my reappraisal, making my own e-documents and all those kinds of things to save the county money. Because I could purchase an exchanger that would make my life a hell of a lot easier, faster, more efficient, but it's going to cost the county money. So I'm trying to make it more efficient myself, I guess.
Yeah, I, I'm no computer guru by no means, I'm probably the most deliberate one in the room, but even I can see the value.
Yeah, because you had somebody come today, didn't you? Doing that more, or was that yesterday?
Yesterday. Yeah, we're, we are dinosaurs, there's no time to doubt it. There's so much more to be done for the new programs that we're manually doing now.
Right. So that's a lot of the same line, like when Shane came in and talked about the law enforcement officer, lost software. You know, I think if you were to ask him and say, hell yeah, it was a great investment, it's sage of its times, it's just ultimately money, because your manpower is spent doing what it needs to, as opposed to trying to wrestle around with some antique software. You know, but there's other things, you know, like if you look at most of the furniture, I mean, I go over to the warehouse here and get this stuff from their surplus stuff, because I know that I can't just go off and buy that bookcase, I can't buy the chairs, you know, these monitors. I recycle computers instead of buying new ones, reading used ones.
When the wind power money starts coming in, and hopefully the road and rich tax money starts coming in fully, uh, by the end of the next fiscal year, we will have received some. Is that a light at the end of the tunnel, or is that a mirage?
I would say if you're waiting for a train, you'd be seeing a moped come down the rail today.
And they're not going to be our saviors.
No, we just got our wind power money for this year, and it's, it's a good chunk. But it's not going to offset the issues that we have. With inflation, everything we have, you know, from the cost of the quarter oil, fuel, parts, repair supplies, everything.
There's nothing that hasn't doubled, most of it's more than that.
When the reappraisal starts kicking in, and those new values are plugged in to your tax collection formula, is that going to make a difference?
Yes.
Like a huge difference?
Huge is a big word, because there's still a process of equalization.
Yes, there is.
I'm hoping that, at least if that road bridge tax goes in, we can at least not have to pull so much out of the general fund all year. Start utilizing some of those things maybe a little more for general, obviously.
Right.
General funding, things in the end, like you just discussed, the software and the, so hopefully.
We have this discussion all the time with, with major expenses here at the courthouse, be it updating, uh, computer programs, be it fixing a drain on the balcony. And all this stuff that's expensive, it's like, there, we always have these discussions and whether we can fund them, and we decide that generally they're kind of an emergency, and we decide to do them, but, but I, I think we're at a point of coming to the end of taking care of emergencies if we can't pay for it.
Is there any hope that the motor fuel taxes, uh, as presently structured, might be changed, massaged some, and the local share could go up?
I've not seen that conversation anywhere yet. I mean, I can't say no.
Who initiates that?
Most of it's federal fuel tax.
Would that be?
There is a state.
Is it the Congress that sets it?
Yeah.
And the distribution formula is congressional?
Well, the treasurer's office collects, like, when you do your license plates, or when you buy fuel at the pump.
That's what I mean, that, that's what I'm talking about.
Right, so if you look at our gasoline bid, for example, they're going to give us ten cent discount off the pump price, and they're going to refund us eighteen cents a gallon of federal fuel tax. So there's your number, it's been eighteen for a long time, on gasoline. The state imposed emergency gas taxes after ninety-six and seven. And I haven't seen where they disappeared, but it sure explains why they've got a bunch of new equipment, why they're building sheds all over the state. So it's, it, it could be out there, I just haven't seen it. But I know this conversation about funding for counties is almost, it's a national topic, because when I look at the NACO magazines, you see, you know, these counties that, I mean, they're trying to figure out ways to generate more money, because it's just, the normal pathway is not there. It's not stable like it used to be.
Well, it may be, um, that the governmental levels above the county level, in other words, anything but local, are doing whatever they can to put local government out of business.
Well, I think you and I both know, but if you look back in time, you would see effort from a certain governor who passed away, and how he wanted to strengthen school districts into consolidation. And when I first started in law enforcement, that was a topic about counties.
Yes.
UGS, they issued a report, they saw thirteen population centers as being the hub for the new state. And that conversation has never died.
I wonder if this is their sophisticated, slow-motion methodology.
I don't think anybody would ever admit it. So instead they call it an incentive, what's the incentive for two counties to cooperate with each other? Well, there's a lot of incentives. I mean, like we were talking, Nicole and I, about having several counties go in to do the striping thing together so that the crew would only mobilize once. Well, that's a great incentive, but the underlying theme under this incentive might be is, we're just going to choke the crap out of this one, so that one survives. But I don't think you'll ever find anybody that would admit that.
Senator Brightley was in our, in this commissioner's chambers twice, like, in, in the year twenty twenty-three, and discussed county consolidation with the, the state. State believes, there, there's a theory that we only need ten or twelve counties in South Dakota, and I, I understand some savings in administration costs.
It won't save the administrative costs.
The, the, the roads are still going to all cost the same. So much bureaucratic overlay that most of the money is going to be spent there. Where it needs to be, on roads and that, won't get spent.
The latest, most, most efficient level of government is always the local government.
Yeah.
There's nothing, nothing at any level that is as efficient as local government, in my view.
I agree with you, when you start consolidating, you're never as practical as you once was.
And somebody always feels cheated.
Well, exactly.
Some building is going to go empty.
Uh-huh.
That's the part that a lot of people talk consolidation, as long as it doesn't affect me. There's no way, I mean, if they start consolidating counties, there's a good chance the end county won't exist.
Right.
This building will be empty. So I mean, consolidation's fine, but I still think the further you get away from the large population centers, everything's going to be worse. Your roads are going to be worse.
If you live in one of those twelve or thirteen communities, you probably all breathe a sigh of relief as you see this unfold.
Yeah, because you, you'll be fine.
Yeah.
Well, my response to Senator Brightley was, if, leave it up to counties. If they want to consolidate, if two counties think they can work together and consolidate and save some money for those two counties, but, but I certainly don't think that should be a decision by the state, you know?
Well, it's done already.
We are creatures of the state, though.
Sometime, yeah, we are.
They can end our existence tomorrow if they want, or the next election.
Well, just let us run out of business.
They can put us out of business in thirty days.
Well, I, I would say if that happens, there probably will be a major changeover at the Capitol.
When the cycles roll around.
When you look at what the population is distributed in South Dakota, well, my God, it's all way down there or way out there. There ain't much in the middle, middle of the hinterlands where we live. We don't have the numbers.
So somebody told me just recently, the voting, the voting power of the I twenty-nine corridor on the east. So somebody told me just recently, the voting, the voting power of the I twenty-nine corridor on the east side of the state, and it was incredible. The, the voice that.
I don't doubt it.
That the I twenty, I twenty-nine corridor has over there.
That's the meaning.
So we didn't, we didn't have anything on the agenda other than some open discussion about where we're at and.
You talked about Brightley there just a second ago. Can I say something about that?
Yeah.
Do you remember when he was here and I can't remember who else, there were several representatives here that showed us a list of what they were working on in the legislature that would enhance, that were opportunities to enhance.
Yep.
County, county, county revenues. Did any of that go through?
Well, they tried it with emergency management and VSO, but from what I've seen too, with the emergency management is the state would draw money for basically like putting a squad sergeant over five or six counties, but we'd still have to have a county director. So I'm, I'm not sure how that's gonna save money. Same thing with VSOs.
Several of the suggestions were things like, uh, authorizing the application of a county imposed sales tax. Some of those things, remember there's a list about ten or fifteen things?
Yeah, that failed.
None of it happened, did it?
They've, they've been fighting long and hard against that for, the county's been wanting it for years.
And the other thing that they told us is that they're going to allow counties to have like access to a state public defender's office, but it only starts when the appeals process starts. So it doesn't do squat or circuit court, uh, appeals case.
But the worst week it gets done there is twenty-five thousand dollars on a particular prosecution, correct? Isn't that the maximum?
If we stay in the pool.
Yeah, if we stay in the pool.
Yeah, but they're also talking about dismantling it because some counties are bailing out. If it's to a certain level, it can't fund itself. Same thing with the catastrophic order.
Didn't know that.
Well, to, to cover Jeff's question about starting up operations, um, we're four weeks away from our next meeting. Um, should we look at, uh, no decisions made, but should we look at the possibility of a operating line? So he can go through with normal operations, uh, if it's a month before we can, I mean, short-term operating money, I I don't know.
I think before you get there, and this is just my thought, I'm not a decision maker, so remember that, is if we can find out if we can get the step money ahead of time.
Is step money the same money we've been talking about that million, whatever it is?
Because I remember a conversation, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't like Doug Kennenberg say something like you could leave it with the state and then draw it out or you could get it in advance? Or was that a different fund they were talking about?
What's the step money?
You serve as transportation.
That's not the gas money, not the taxes.
It's federal DUT money administered by the state.
Not the million we were talking about before, whatever comes in May.
No, this, this, this STP, it serves as transportation program. You can use that fund. You can borrow against it for zero percent interest. If you get in trouble and you wanna borrow a million bucks, I think you gotta have a project in, towards that.
How about projects?
Well.
How about staying?
You wanna do that or you can save that fund if you want a big project counter or you can just, if it needs to be done, you can just go out and do your million dollar project. That step money will just make payments towards until it's paid off.
Okay, if we're expecting one point three plus million dollars in receipts in the next month or six weeks, isn't that enough to give you confidence that we could go ahead with these contractors?
I think so.
Huh?
I think so.
You said it can't be counted because we don't know until we have it in hand.
Right.
But that's no different than any other year. So.
Right, but it's the step money sitting in the pier, the mechanism over there just hasn't allocated yet. Then at least we know the money sat sitting in South Dakota.
Could we find out with a phone call or two or ten?
Yeah, I can, Doug Kennenberg, you can tell me.
Okay, well then maybe we'll be, be as scared as we are.
But I would say if, if that looks like it's garbage, then I think probably have another special meeting. Explore Plan B.
Yeah.
I think we should at least investigate a line of credit of sorts and just see what's available up there. With what interests we're expected to pay.
At least that we have some idea whether we utilize it or not, cancel it, but.
And when you said zero percent interest, I was like.
Well, yeah, that, that's a good, but you can like that if you use four years worth of one year, then even if it's a year, then you're screwed for three years after that.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that doesn't really, doesn't really work either, but in the short term, maybe, you know, you get, but.
When we did the Lake Louise Road, that was a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a mile and that fund went towards paying for that. And when that finally got paid for, we just started taking the check. But, you know, you can utilize it anytime. You can borrow against it or you can save it.
Bank it up?
Yeah, bank it. So it's a pretty good, pretty good option, especially with zero percent.
Is it? Is it, you know, like the, the oil, obviously all those, those items of oil and all those things are bid for the year so we know that, what we can get them at, right?
Yeah, yeah, they're locked in.
They're locked in, so I guess it's not ideal, obviously, but if you.
But most of them, when you order the oil, they want the money when you order it or when they deliver?
We usually pay it in first, pay it first of month, you know, first permission meeting against it, you know, they, they're willing to wait that long.
What do you, what do you plan on oiling that shit?
Saying large road, now it's up the west of Orient and then if money's there, I'd like to put oil on the Baylen Road south. And a lot of catching.
So what's it cost you a mile, uh, just to put the oil on?
If you do the chip zero, it's about twenty-five thousand. If you're putting a thin overlay under it, it's about fifty thousand. A mile. And that's pretty, pretty good deal. A lot of these guys are contract partners, micro servicing. They're spending fifty-eight thousand, like low, a hundred and seventy-five on the high end, but they think it's cheap. That's down there. So. We still operate about half of what a contractor could come in and do it for you.
Anybody feel any better? Not particularly.
Shirley, how about you? Final call. Got any wisdom? Any money on us?
Yeah, sure.
All right, we'll be over in a while.
Okay.
So, so if, if our road and bridge levy isn't referred, well, we can look at next year being not such a pinch. If it is referred and in a respectful citizens' decision, if they do that, that's, that's the right, that's what keeps government in check. But the, the real question now is how do we get through this year? Cause there, there is no revenue from, from that for this year, so. How, how do we, how do we? Do we go on with normal operations in Jeff's budget? Uh, or do we?
I don't see how we can, I guess.
We can.
Truthfully, I mean, it's.
Does you have any big expenditures scheduled this year for equipment that we can put off for a year?
Not for equipment, for equipment. We got the debt service line, three oil knocks out with the blades. But, uh, we got things coming off every year, but right now we're kinda tapped on for big purchases.
It's all just standard maintenance stuff. I mean, it's so expensive, but just cause it costs so much more, your oil, your fuels, your gravel, all that stuff, they just.
That was the, that's the thing.
So I don't know, my, my, my real thought is I guess we're gonna have to, my personal opinion, which doesn't sound great, but you're gonna have to knock off some projects or you're gonna have to do as much of them or until later in the year, until we go.
Or maybe the vendor's willing to take partial payments along the way and if they charge us one, two, hopefully after a higher percent.
Yeah. I don't know, or if we know that gravel crushing is reasonable, should we crush more gravel and do less oiling? I don't know. I just say. It's your decision, I guess, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's hard to fall back in, you know, and you lose the season and then your whole plan goes back another year.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, if you wouldn't do one of the oilings you wanna do, how far back does that kick you into the next year?
Well, you know, you're off and some of them are already a couple of years off.
Yeah, we, didn't, didn't you finish the Lake Louise Road or, or the section of Lake Louise Road last year that was already five years behind?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so.
When you order like your oil, do you order it for the, what you have, traditionally you order it like for the whole budgeted year projects?
Yeah.
Or do you order just like that in segments?
Well, we, we've got the total tons that we think we're gonna need and they don't really hold us to it all that strong, but I mean, depends on if the price goes up or down, what they want, you know, if it's, if it's going down, they may wanna make, they wanna fill that contract, but if it's going up, then I don't know, it's just. I'll let you go on this one. But they've, they've been really good. It's easy to work with, but I don't think we're tied in to worry about that.
Yes, you see where. Those dollars live and make the call figure out where if those funds are coming, at least get things started.
That would help to know if it's there.
Hmm, well, and yeah, I agree. If it doesn't get referred, that's, that's gonna, we'll all breathe if you.
By the bird in hand theory?
Just have to take it easy, I guess, is all I can say is we just have to. Which is, it's a short season, there's no problem.
This is, this is a tough conversation we're having here. If it gets referred to a vote and gets voted down, then we have really.
Now it's serious, yeah.
Now it's serious. Yes, exactly. I mean, we're talking services are gonna be cut after me.
And then things will really go by the wayside. It's gonna take a long time to get back to.
Long time, a lot of money, cause everything's getting higher priced.
Yeah, it'll be a shame because we, we finally got our roads to where we can manage them. To watch them go backwards now would be a shame, but I guess we're all where we are.
And we, we ground up a lot of, a lot of miles of asphalt in the past and been slowly, slowly getting back to better hard surface roads.
Well, I guess we can't remember enough to actually act on anything particularly. I guess my thoughts are we make this call.
And I'm, I'm, I'm with you. Maybe you guys should look into seeing if I can get a, an operating line and what the interest would be on it.
Any idea who would, who do you, I've never even researched.
I would probably just ask the other officers if any of them got, who they did it with.
Yeah. If you could, that'd be great.
Let's see, how many counties are under this shade?
I think the last I heard was more than half.
Really?
Probably all of them, but the thirteen I have a preference.
Yeah.
No, I, I, like even Brown County, they have their own issues because they've been wanting to build a new jail because they're farming out prisoner care to other places and they have been unable to pass a bond or opt out to build a new jail, so. I've just got a text message that the opt out for the Fulton School District passed, which surprised me. That based on some of the comments I've seen on Facebook, if you live in the Fulton School District and you're looking at a new opt out there and you have our tax increase here, it's gonna be like a one G punch for a lot of those folks who need to get up in the.
George, north part?
North, northeast part of the county. Some of them are in the Redfield School District.
And Redfield is a very high.
Very high one.
Yes.
Cause I have got, people called me, I wanna know why the taxes are so high and I said, what school district you in? And they told me, they said, there's your problem. I said, that's, I said, we have no control for that.
Right. Yep, I've heard that from sort of.
And now it'll be up in the north because there's the north part of the county and the Fulton School District.
I think the most amazing thing is with your skeleton crew, you can take care of four hundred whatever miles of roadway that we have to take care of. We can provide all the county services that are required of us by, by law to our citizens. And in my view, our fifty-one employees are this county's greatest asset. They're more valuable than this building because they're loyal and they're steady and they do a good job. We have not very much money. We're not properly rewarding them salary wise. And the truth is, if any observer came through here, came through this county with the lowest tax levy in the state of South Dakota, and I don't care whether it's to a casual observer or a critical observer, they wouldn't know the difference with it. That's how good our people are. With what little money we've got.
What else do you need to know?
Okay.
Nothing. We didn't really help you out.
No, it's just good to know that we have the power. I don't wanna be like, I'm the only one thinking about.
No, we're all thinking about. How many tons of ground do you think are crushed? Are there crushing all the bits?
I was in, I'm not sure about Joe or Bill, Bill, Young Bill's tip. I think the contract runs out. I'm not sure what's gonna happen there. I haven't been able to make the deal on Sheila's course, so I'm not gonna get in there. So long as Kurt Johnson, Byron Wood just hasn't, another pull out of there.
And that's the other thing. We need, we set better.
I forgot. Doesn't lie.
We can, we can meet this debt. It is gonna focus on the dollar. Is there a motion to adjourn? I'll make that motion. Motion by Luke, Jim was second, second by Jim, need discussion on adjournment. And no, I'll pay the eye.
Eye.
Oppose, no, we are adjourned.
Wish I had a, a check for you. Like you, I guess. Always okay.
Oh, that's for about two years? Right, right, your check was so good, would you borrow against it?